There was a little man.
No, Saturday to the French.
They have this the western thirty. Twenty seven grand.
All right, everybody ready? Done a break now. All right, folks, it is seven thirty two. We're gonna call this meeting to order, please. If you'll stand and say. Stand and trustee Hopp and say the pledge. Which next lead up?
If I don't think it's.
Five of the United States of America.
And to the public. But one is. Need a bit as well.
Roll call vote, please. Uh trustee Hoff.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Here.
Trustee Diatley.
Here.
Trustee Maguire. Uh we'll do that next. All right, we have five. Oh my god. Name for her if not. Oh. Please say it. Okay. All right, uh we have five trustees in attendance. We have a physical forum. Can I get a motion from the board to approve? Uh. Electronic means for trustee Maguire. She contacted me earlier today in light of the weather.
So move the. Who?
Moved by Diatley's, uh seconded by Schatzberger. Did you say who?
I said, I was gonna say.
Oh, thank you. Uh. Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All in favor, no opposed, motion passes. Welcome trustee Maguire. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um the minutes. May I have a motion from the board to approve? The regular board meeting minutes from November twentieth.
The move. Start it.
Moved by Cunnelli, seconded by Diatley. Uh any comments, questions, or edits? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Uh trustee, uh Schatzberger.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Maguire.
Aye.
Trustee Cunnelli.
Aye.
Trustee Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh all of them, all in favor, no opposition, motion passes. All right, president's report. Um I have facility pledged. I've asked the clerk to read. And the interest of stability, I pledge to promote stability by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Thank you. All right, moving on to the president's report. Um. First off, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I hope everybody had a good time. I'm glad to see everybody was able to make it back from their travels. Um. We had, we had a busy week, specifically just before the holidays, MetroNet construction was here and it was, there was lots of disruptions. Uh some outages and interruptions, and I just wanna thank everybody for their patience. I know it was upsetting on many levels, but uh MetroNet, USIC, and Bloodhound did a really outstanding job getting out there, trying to find solutions, find out where there were some hiccups. Uh it, there was a lot of old lines and new lines. And then um the signal that they were using, this is also you saw in some of the Facebook and Village website updates. But what they were using was a signal indicator that was more like a metal detector. So it would ping and let them know that there were lines down there. What they upgraded to after that was um the ground. Ground. I'm sorry.
Radar.
Ground, ground radar. Ground penetrating radar, thank you. Um and that was the picture also posted up on Facebook and the website. It looks like a lawnmower that you're pushing and it has a screen and you can see where, if something is actually under there, whether it's metal, ma- plastic, man-made, or even roots from a tree. So that has been very helpful. Um I did just speak to Tim with MetroNet on my drive into the meeting. Obviously with the weather and the snow, um they have paused, so I think everybody's appreciating the pause right now. He will let me know when they will return to work, especially with the cold temperatures coming up. They would need to come out, do some more location locating. Do some more location flags. Please leave the flags in the yard, especially when we have snow. This helps us get to those lines. Um. And they'll let us know. So maybe later this week, depending on the weather, it may, might not be until next week. Uh also with the outages that we had, please, if you have medical necessities, if you're on oxygen, if you need a power, please notify us here at the village. We will keep a list. Uh chief maintains a list frontline just in case of emergency situations and those who may require additional help. We do not want anybody's power to go out and for them to be medically in a, in a medically difficult position. Um nine one one, please contact us. Let your neighbors know if you live by, if you, somebody lives by themselves. Just keep an eye on your neighbors, please. Um. Speaking of neighbors and sort of along that line, outdoor lighting, uh some interesting comments from residents and fair. Uh as evenings grow darker earlier, please be mindful of your security lights and where your Christmas decorations shine. Obviously their Christmas lights, holiday lights, fun and enjoyable, but also consider your security lights. Um. Many, many years ago, we had one on the corner of our house. The light switch to it was in my parents' closet, so weird out of the way place. But in order to turn the light on by their closet, sometimes they'd accidentally hit the security light. We don't see it because we're inside, but it was going straight into our neighbor's bedroom window. Um some res, some neighbors have indicated that new security lights have gone up and they're shining straight into their bedroom window. You know, Andy Horn's familiar with lights from the strip malls. So yeah, just take a look sometime when you're out walking your dog in the evening and see where your lights go. Uh maybe that's why your neighbor isn't saying hi lately. Um. Speaking of lights, uh moving on to the holiday events, we have the uh fire department Santa run is coming up this weekend. It's their community food drive, something we all look forward to. I believe it's Saturday and Sunday here. The sixth and seventh. That's been posted on Facebook and the Village website. Please, no clothing donations. They're just looking for non-perishable food items. Uh monetary contributions or new toys. Uh also that same week, the same weekend at four o'clock on the sixth, we have the tree lighting holiday in the hollow. Uh please come out and join us for that. It'll be honoring Matt Bishop and the school kids will be out there singing and it's just, it's wonderful time. Uh let's see what else I have on here. Um. I just really just wanna kinda go back to Thanksgiving and just thank everybody here in the village for these past six months and being flexible and rolling with me as I learned this job and learned the different dynamics of working with each of you, whether you're trustee, chief administrator. Uh Mark and uh Jeff on Zoom, I just, I really, and actually Kyle, Dylan and uh Tyler, who are probably out plowing and I uh salting the roads right now. Everybody's just done a wonderful job and it really takes a lot of us to help make this community run and it also takes a lot of residents and positive attitudes and participation and it's just we live in a really incredible place, especially driving in with seeing the snow fall today. So please take a moment to reflect on that during this holiday season, take some time to cherish your family and your friends and your warm roof and your food and focus on some of those more important things. All right, and we, in the meantime, we will make sure that the village continues to run with fewer interruptions, so you can enjoy those holidays. All right, thank you very much. Uh moving on to the clerk report, please. Um we had the Pingree Grove Police Department reach out to Chief Parma. They do a giving tree for their police department. And they received a request from a Sleepy Hollow family, so they asked if we would be interested. Uh talked to Chief Parma and brought it to Administrator Van and President Bo, and they both agreed that we would do that. So there'll be a list up at the desk with Sharon. Um and these little mittens that are laminated with each of the uh requests that the families had for the children and the parents as well as the household. If anyone's interested, they can come in, look, see what's available, take the laminated mitten with them. Purchase the gift, wrap it, return it with this laminated mitten on it. Uh we will have a checkout sheet too, so that way you forget to drop it off. I can call and remind you. Um we don't have a date of when we need the items back yet, but we will put that on the Facebook pages in the Village website when we have it. I will post it up with the mittens once we know. Yes. Thank you for doing that. I'm very excited.
Excuse me, is that, is that, are the residents of Sleepy Hollow and Pingree Grove?
No, they um they had a sleepy hall because we don't offer that.
Okay.
So they had submitted an application to the Pingree Grove Police Department.
Okay.
And they forwarded chief.
Okay.
So they are just sleepy hollow resident. And thank you, actually on that, let me follow up with that. Um Carpentersville, we're all familiar that there was a really horrific fire this past weekend. Um they are doing wonderfully well with donations going in, so before jumping in there, see what it is that they need. Uh they have Red Cross working with them. They have ample uh donations, but check their website if you are interested in helping out. Um also, please always consider the, all, any of the food pantries around here, so. Thank you. Um. Building official report, we don't have that. Um Mark, is there an attorney report this evening?
No report this evening, Madam President, but I see some items, new business. I'd be able to answer questions about if necessary.
Thank you. Uh engineer report, Steve, Jeff Steele.
There is nothing new to report.
Nothing, thank you. Uh Eugene, Village Administrator report.
Uh request a motion for the accounts payables in the amount of ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second. Moved by Hoff, seconded by Thomas. Any comments, questions, discussion? I did have a question for Kyle, but he's not here. Maybe you know, the, if there's uh something at twelve eighteen Timber that's in October. This install by Waterworks.
Was it the uh?
What was that?
It's just station, the uh the water testing station.
Our testing station over on Timber Drive.
Okay.
Quick. I'll ask Kyle and Brett. Um any other discussion? Hearing none, can I give a roll call vote, please? Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
Trustee Maguire. Trustee Hoff.
Yes.
Trustee Cunnelli.
Aye.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Um that twelve eighteen Timber is the water testing station. What it is, is that um Kyle has to go into people's homes in order to get water samples on a regular basis. And by installing these, he doesn't have to do that anymore. Um the EPA requires testing from certain areas. And so we put the um two water testing stations in those areas, so we don't have to bother about people anymore.
Where did those get placed?
Well, one is on twelve eighteen Timber on Metro where the other one is, uh you know.
Good.
The minutes.
We've, I've gotten several complaints about um the amount of time to get building permits approved.
Mm-hmm.
Um generally, when Barb did it, permits were approved within two days. Um. They tell us to tell everybody two weeks. Um there's been some that have been over a month. Um. All I could say is, I went and got my car worked on at a body shop and they had a nice little sign. They said fast and cheap. If you want it fast, it's not gonna be cheap. If you want it cheap, it's not gonna be fast. So we're getting what we paid for. You know, yes, we've got lower cost for the building permits, but they're not getting done as timely as they were before.
Okay. Uh trustee Thomas and I, we're just figuring out some time this week. We're gonna try and go meet with George over in Carpenter's Hill as it is, so we'll talk to him about that and get to get a better understanding of the process over there.
That's it for now.
Thank you. Uh comments from the public? Not, no comments? Sure gets. Uh trustee reports, Roads, Parks, and Streets, trustee Cunnelli.
Well, as you alluded to, uh the team is out blowing snow and salting right now. Does anybody wanna take a guess at how many tons of salt was dropped over the weekend? There is a prize for this trivia play. Quarter bottle of R. Twenty-five tons of salt distributed uh over the weekend. Um and as of right now, we have zero fatalities of mailboxes, so that's uh. Um one salt spreader did have a failure with a hydraulic system, so that's being repaired now. Um but we also received a uh well, I saw it on, on Facebook, a resident complimented the Public Works team for the job that they've done, so. They did put in a lot of, a lot of time for that uh weekend. Um. And I think that is all that I have for roads. I was gonna mention parks, but you did as far as the uh upcoming holiday uh in the park, so we're good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, finance, trustee Hoff.
Uh just a couple of items. Uh I just wanted to let everybody know that I attended the uh IRVDA meeting, which is the Upper Illinois River Valley Development Authority. And uh in attendance with Melissa and Annis from the chamber. And it was a presentation on another possibility for funding for us if we're looking down the road to replace our water mains. Uh you can, you can get your money pretty quick. But the, the rate was probably forty percent. Although we're stable in cheaper ways that reduce that and then.
And what's the EPA current rate, what, two?
Two, two point one six.
So it's double, okay.
So I was here today in the village and uh at home and I updated uh what Jeff Steele had given us back in two thousand twenty-one with the updated uh rates or cost per foot of water main.
Mm-hmm.
Um it was at one fifty to two, now it's three to three fifty. And that's since two thousand twenty-one, so uh we have a finance committee meeting scheduled on December eleventh at one o'clock. It's a Thursday. If anybody would like to attend to hear the particulars that we have so far. But uh I'm scrambling wherever we can find uh financing that makes it cheaper for us since we're not unlimited mains here. So um.
Touch cushions.
That is it for finance.
Thank you.
That's what I've been working on.
And also at that finance committee meeting, we'll be discussing police and staff Saturday, okay? All right, please attend the finance committee if you're curious. Uh water and sewer, trustee Maguire.
Uh thankfully, nothing to report this week. I think we're the only town in the area that hasn't had any major water main breaks, so ironically, good news.
All right, thank you for each other, Kyle and the guys. Uh Buildings and Environment, trustee Schatzberger.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Uh Buildings and Zoning, trustee Thomas.
No. I switched police again, I'm sorry. Dave first.
What is it with Dave? Dave, you have to sit over here.
I took an hour this morning, I don't know. Uh just a couple things, um with the snow on the roads and people are out walking their dogs late at night, please carry a flashlight or wear some reflective clothing. Um I walk my own dog and, you know, he doesn't always like to get off the road in the snow, so we walk on the edge of the road, so try to carry a flashlight so cars can see you. Um you know, because it's a very dangerous thing when you're out walking your dog. Um so that, uh just that and trustee Hoff and I will be sitting down and talking with chief. We're talking about funding. And looking at funding things uh for the police as well, so we'll be working on that here and getting that meeting going here this next week. Um so we'll get that going. Um that's all I have. Chief, you have anything to add?
Uh just a couple of brief things. We did sell out of our raffle tickets for the Shop With A Cop. Which is the first time in the five years I've been here that that's happened, so thank you to all the residents that participated in that. Um. We've got three of our officers that will actually be taking part in the event itself, the, the safe families go shopping, which three officers from a department of, of our size is by far more than any other, other village involved, so I'm proud of our guys for stepping up.
That's all.
In doing that. Um as I said, I won't be able to attend it because I'll be having surgery, so I won't be at the next meeting either. I won't be at the finance committee. Many.
You won't be.
No, because I'm having surgery on the night, so I'm pretty sure I won't be around the eleven. Uh but I will make sure I do a details, uh detailed memo to Eugene to make sure that he has know all of my information. We've already been talking a little bit about it. Um. One other thing I will, I will say, you may have noticed that there is a uh new, newfound attention that's been brought to uh a, a cold case that we've had occur in our town, the Ashneider. Um cold case, homicide case. Um one thing I will caution uh us all as members of uh village trustees or public officials, people may ask you questions, people may wanna know what's going on with the case. I would caution you and ask you not to um give unsupported or unsubstantiated opinions on things like that. Uh it doesn't serve any purpose other than unnecessarily stir people up. Um if there are any questions or any issues do come up, direct them towards me. I'll make sure that either I answer the questions personally or I get them into the right people's hands at State's Attorney's Office to make sure that the issues get addressed. And that includes any tips, further information, any of that stuff. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, now trustee Thomas.
Um I've got some questions about what the information that was in the legend. Do you want me just to send that to you directly or?
Um let's get to that when we bring up the legend under new business.
Okay. Um the only other thing I do wanna say in regards to um Kyle and his group uh Public Works and the police, because I saw a couple officers out shoveling people out of
oh.
Areas. Um they were out there first thing. I mean, I heard them starting and uh whenever it all started, that crazy snow and stuff. Um they were out there doing, they had our roads cleared. I will tell you that Saturday morning when I was out early um seventy-two thirty-one, I was driving through Westundy. Their roads were crap. That's like I'm being nice. It, they were terrible. Compared to what our little town and our, you know, we only have three Public Works people. They did an awesome job, so kudos to those three, even you know, Westundy, he has a huge Public Works Department.
Yeah.
There was nobody to be found. I didn't see anything and i- i- and it was at seven thirty, eight o'clock. You would have thought they were gonna be, I, it, it was not good. So they did a great job and even tonight before coming to the meeting, they um they were already going up and down the streets with the salt and stuff, so kudos to our uh Public Works team and the police, because like I said, I did see our, a couple of our officers digging some vehicles out that were going too fast, so.
I made the smart move of getting my car washed today and then of course I passed the plow as it was doing salt on my way into the meeting, so thank you guys. I thought they were saying hey that way.
Um and then Rhonda Schatzberger and I have a meeting with the Park District next week, um the eighth, the eighth, to sit down with them to see what their updates, uh because they had to do, they have to do a feasibility sustainability uh thing with their budgets and everything. It's required for them, so we're gonna get an update on that and also in regards to what is happening with that's it.
All right, moving on to old business. Uh we have a discussion and motion to approve an ordinance implement, implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax. Yeah. Do I have a motion? Oh, do you wanna discuss it first?
Yeah, um this ordinance is exactly what um it's IMO and the Department of Revenue's model ordinance. Um it's exactly what they have asked for and every instance where this has been modified, it has been rejected by the Department of Revenue. Uh I contacted uh Carpenter'sville. They have uh passed it exactly as it is and they haven't had a problem with it. Um. Is, are we gonna get a ton of money from this? No, but every little bit helps.
All right. So move. Move by Schatzberger.
Second.
Seconded by Thomas. Uh any comments, questions, discussion?
But can you explain what an occupation taxes, this is just the title of the we uh, your, so, you know, they're, they're but this is so basically what this is, is this allows us to collect um money on like if the liquor store sells a bag of chips.
Right.
Or if uh Dunkin Donuts sells a bag of, of coffee or something like that, it allows us to collect a one percent tax.
Just the term occupation.
It's just like, this is, that's their term, you know.
I think it's the occupation of the business and.
Yeah. Okay.
So we were not getting that prior.
No. So this is, this is actually something that is new. Um. Home rule. Um communities could impose this tax. And this is the tax that to go, that the state that eliminated.
Right.
Well, when they changed the law, they allowed us, not vulnerable people to apply for it also.
Thank you.
And we did not take advantage of it when we should have. And so now we'll be, we'll, we'll lose six months worth of, of income because we didn't jump on this right away.
And then how long does it take for us to get, get that income?
July. So we it needed to be in before October first, because we didn't make that deadline. Um it won't, uh I think it has to be before April. And then they start collecting in July.
All right, any further comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, could I have a roll call vote, please? Trustee Hoff.
Yes.
Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
Trustee Cunnelli.
Aye.
Trustee Maguire.
Aye.
All in favor, no opposition, motion passes. Thank you all. Uh moving on to item B, discussion and motion to approve an ordinance. An ordinance amending the regulations governing billing and collection of water and sewer charges in the village.
This. So what this is about is that the way our ordinance is set up, it says that um the late penalty will be applied twenty-five days after the billing day. And what this caused is our billing dates and our due dates for our water bills to change every single month. It, you know, it was generally due between the first and the fourth or fifth. And billing date could have been from like the sixth to the, to the tenth, somewhere in that range. Well, what this does, it allows us to have static dates so that we know that billing date is always gonna be on the eighth. The payment due date will always be on the fourth of the month. If the fourth ends on a um on a weekend, we're gonna collect whatever in the red box Monday morning and just assume that came in on time unless they date the check afterward, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then Monday after afternoon, we'll apply the, the late penalty. So this allows us to do the first business day after the due date. And this is also something that our programmer for um it's gonna integrate the payment system with our MSI asked for.
Okay, okay. So then that will enable our billing better.
Better billing and so, so whenever anyone asks when our bills are due, on the fourth. They can mark their calendars and, and know, you know, a year in advance, ten years in advance, it's always gonna be on the fourth.
All right. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Actually, can I get a motion?
So move.
Moved by Cunnelli, seconded by Schatzberger. Um. Comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
Trustee Cunnelli.
Aye.
Trustee Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Maguire.
Aye.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes. Thank you all. Moving. Uh moving on to item C, the discussion and motion to approve, approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax levy ordinance in the amount of nine hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars. Do I have a motion?
Move, so.
Second.
Moved by Hoff, seconded by Diatley. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing not.
Okay. I, I just need an explanation. Nine hundred eighty-three thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Is, what is, what does that number represent?
Two point nine percent increase over the previous years.
How long?
Okay, yeah. So that were limited to um five percent or CPI per chapter is lower. So that's the maximum we can ask for.
So this is what we anticipate receiving as a result of this levy.
And so, you know, this is what our ask is.
Okay.
Okay? The county will give us whatever they wanna give us. That's what it basically comes down to, is it? We ask, but they determine what we're actually gonna get. Generally, this is pretty close to what we're gonna do.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but it's, it's out of our control. All we can do is ask. Okay.
All right, any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Trustee Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Cunnelli.
Aye.
Trustee Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Maguire.
Aye.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes. Uh moving on to new business, the first item is discussion and motion to approve the Sleepy Hollow Legend Winter Edition. I would like to point out to everybody that just during this meeting, I was able to send in my letter from the president. Uh so that is not included in your newsletter. I didn't do anything crazy in it, but um. So yes, um there were some edits, so if you have any at this time, I know CM Parker is listening intently to find out what we, our feedback. Okay. Trustee Thomas.
Um, I read in there that it said we had three uh. Market in the hollow, I thought we had four.
Hmm.
We did have four. June, July, August, August, September. Yeah, okay.
And then the. And then the one at the market.
Market.
Halloween.
So four summer plus Halloween, yeah. And then the other question in the connect with the village section. It said, um, P and Z meeting on as needed basis, I thought we were scheduling at least one or two a month. To cancel, but you know, cancel the second one is.
I'm trying to pull this out, you have to talk about it. Um, okay.
And then it also said, unless I read it wrong, looking for volunteers for this committee, I thought we had enough for the planning and zoning committee.
Oh, we do.
In.
Which section was that in? That was in the?
In the um, connect with the village section, it was down towards the bottom.
Are there more?
Um, just one more, and then it said. The meetings will be live streamed, I wasn't sure.
We don't.
Right. I didn't, wasn't sure if it was referring to the village board meetings or the P and Z, like, I know there had been discussion about that, but.
Gotcha. Alright, so CM, um, if you're listening and I'll send you an email. Um, we wanted to correct the numbers on the market in the hollow, there were four summer ones. Now Halloween, that was the service club, so was that technically a market in the hollow or just an extension?
I think it was, I thought it was an extension, but I don't.
Okay.
Remember.
So let's correct that and then P and Z. Sorry, let me pull that up there. Next to the village.
I do see your letter in there.
Yes, um, apparently I had a ghostwriter.
You didn't write this one?
No, I did not.
That's a bit scary.
That's comforting.
I should check one. Yes, uh, so on that first, the, the first page of text under the connect with the village. Um, let's get rid of the planning and zoning commission meets monthly. And. As additionally as needed.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Because we had talked about having two meetings at the very last meeting, but we were, we still have to.
Thank you for catching that out. And then it says, anyone interested in volunteering for this commission should contact me. Um, let's just change commission and this commission to any committees. And then we can discuss qualifications and people's interests.
Um, and if we need committees.
Mm-hmm. And then P and Z, and then there was one more, um.
Something about the meeting.
Oh, it says all meetings are now live streamed in village hall, let's say all regular board meetings are now live streamed, and we will aim to see if we can improve upon that.
Because I know we had talked about in the planning and zoning.
And just getting those.
Live streams, yeah, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments from people with respect to the newsletter? There's a lot in there.
We are going to print it and send it out?
No, this is the digital version, the only one that prints is Fourth of July. Anything else, sorry? Alright, um, can I have a motion to approve the Sleepy Hollow Legend Winter Edition with the edits as noted and then the additional? Um, letter, present letter.
So move Diatley?
Second by Thomas.
Move by Diatley, seconded by Thomas, any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote, please. Trustee Hoff?
Aye.
Trustee Canelli?
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes, thank you, everybody, sorry for the downtime there. Alright, uh, last two items, item fourteen B, discussion and motion to approve liability insurance renewal.
We got the renewal request from um, Assured Partners, um. The other big player out there would be Gallagher who bought Assured Partners, so there aren't. Um, but we have excellent service from Assured Partners, uh, they go both our, our um. Package liability insurance and our health insurance. Um, and, and we have gotten nothing but top-notch service, um, you know, since I have been here. Um, overall, it's a ten percent increase over last year's. Um. Cyber security went up twenty-one percent. And this is because um, municipalities are being targeted more by these bad actors. Um, Niles got hit. And uh, it was pretty much disastrous for them and several other ones have gotten hit, um, and. It's a wise investment. You know, we can turn around and point the finger at Wes Bundy who handles our IT and say, well, how come you didn't? Well, you can't always protect against everything. So, um, and it's, it's a relatively small amount of money for a lot of assurance. Um, the other thing that um. Raised the rates is that we had an audit and they said that we had to hold themselves and I've got the chief talking to the insurance company. To explain to them it's not a holding cell, so we might be able to get a slight reduction. And the other um, thing that they didn't like was our memorandum of understanding with King County for um. Like the task force type things. And within the agreement, it says that if they screw up on something, were, you know, one of our cases or whatever. That we will be financially responsible for it, the insurance company doesn't exactly like. So, um, but yeah, the police chief is going to be working with the insurance company to see what we can. And work out on, but in overall, it's, it's not a bad. In, increasing, ten percent is a lot, but it's, it's, it's not that bad.
Again, yeah, put in, can, put into perspective kind of the health insurance last time, it's, it's an increase, but it's not as bad as everybody else's.
Yeah.
Alright, um, can I get a motion from the board to approve the liability insurance renewal?
So move Schatzberger.
So.
Moved by Schatzberger, seconded by Hoff. Uh, comments, questions, discussion?
When does this expire?
It's uh, goes summer thirty-first to the summer thirty-first. So, so, so one year policy.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Trustee Canelli?
Aye.
Trustee Hoff?
Aye.
Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes, thank you, everybody. Uh, last item on, under new business, I'm sorry. No, we have an exception, uh, discussion and motion to approve the twenty twenty-six board meeting schedule. Uh, it was the last page in your packet, if you notice, there were three federal holidays in there that were pushing the meetings to the following Tuesday. And there is one in there that's a personal ask on my part. Um, my employer does an annual fundraiser, which IE also helps pay for my salary. Um, so I was wondering if we could push the first meeting in August to the second, to the Tuesday instead of that Monday. Um, but that's just a personal ask, so. You know, I can see Canelli. It's like, what can I get out of this? Uh, any comments, or sorry, can I get a motion from the board to approve the board meeting schedule?
So, second.
Moved by Canelli, seconded by Diatley. Any comments, questions, discussion? Alright, are you hearing none, roll call vote, please? Trustee Hoff?
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Trustee Canelli?
Aye.
Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
Alright, all is, all in favor, no opposed, motion passes, thank you very much. We do have one last little item, um, it's going to be executive session, but it's just an update. Uh, it should just be a brief few minutes. Um, so on that note, I'm going to say thank you very much to the audience members. We will not be conducting any actionable items after the executive session. So thank you for joining us, but we're going to kick you out, please.
Be careful driving.
Yes, yes.
Yes, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session, ladies?
So move.
Second, moved by Canelli, seconded by Thomas. Trustee, trustee Hoff?
Uh, vote, aye.
Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
Trustee Canelli?
Aye.
Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
All in favor, no opposed, motion passes, thank you, we're going to executive session.
In two minutes.
Take, take two minutes?
I have to get my recorder.